Planning Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Gray.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Vice Chair.
Sorry, excuse me. Sorry, Vice Chair Davis. Um, Councilmember Schneider.
She's here.
She's muted.
I'm sorry, here, but I'm ghosting, so camera will be black.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Oliver.
Present.
Councilmember Feng.
Here.
Vice Mayor Papin. Vice Mayor Papin.
Me?
Yes. Thank you. Mayor Leva.
Here.
Four members of the Planning Commission are present. All members of the City Council are present. Planning Commissioner Chair Jean-Joe is excused.
Okay, can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Vice Chair Maureen Davis, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. With that, uh, we're going to, uh, go to existing business, which is our joint study session of the Millbrae City Council and Planning Commission to discuss our general plan update. And we have somebody from our city to do a presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, uh, members of the City Council, also, uh, Vice Planning Commission Chair Maureen Davis and the Planning Commissioners. Thank you for being here this evening. This is our, another one of our, uh, joint study sessions. Now, we have, um, our economic, our community development director, uh, with us this evening that will then introduce our, uh, consulting team, Mr. Jim Harness from Inter and Harness. Um, a lot of work has gone into this. There's a lot of information that was distributed to the Planning Commission and City Council. So tonight is, um, you know, the time to, to hear a presentation and then, uh, you know, open it up for questions and answers and discussion and, and, and moving the city forward with these two very important elements that include our land use and built environment element uh, and our economic development element. So without any further ado, I would like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, the City's Community Development Director.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be making the presentation tonight. My name is Darcy Smith, the City Millbrae Community Development Director, and I'm joined by Jim Harness, Principal at Inter and Harness, who's the lead general plan consulting team on this effort. This is on the City Millbrae General Plan Update. Really excited to be here before you tonight. Not sure we're more entertaining than NFL football, but I'll keep this to 20 slides. So you can, uh, you can, uh, have the discussion, then get about your night, uh, but really excited to be here tonight. This, this represents months of work, as you know, with these advanced planning documents. Um, we have a big team working on this for the city and our consultant team. Uh, we have Rosca Mata, the planning manager, and Nestor Quabara, associate planner and project manager, who again have been working on this pretty much, I'll be honest, every day, last few weeks tirelessly. Um, and we have from Inter-Harness, Jim Harness, who's the lead, who's been on this project since the very beginning, um, seven years ago, and his great colleagues, um, Brett and Jordan, and not here tonight, but also working behind the scenes very hard, um, is our secret consultant, Ren Con. Uh, but this is really a huge city effort. Everyone from the police chief to the fire marshal, to the chief building official, to your public works and recreation staff members and the finance group, they all touched this document before we prepared it for you to review. So I just want you to know that, that we have been working hard on this and are really excited to present it to you tonight. So what are we here for tonight? Well, you'll have this brief presentation from the city and consultant team regarding these preliminary public review drafts. And just, I just want to pause there and make sure everyone understands these are preliminary public review drafts. It's really the first time you've seen this, this all packaged up for you, um, and ready to look at. Next, we'll move on to public drafts, and those will come, um, in a few more months along with the secret document. But this is a really sort of pivotal phase where we were, we're unveiling these two important elements for you tonight. Um, so you can review them and then provide comments to staff and our team to move forward and finalize these. Um, quick background, our current general plan, it's kind of old, goes back to 1998, and I think you all remember the 90s. They were a very different era. No pandemics, um, and that's, yeah, 24 years ago. There were some piecemeal amendments, nothing major, but the housing element gets updated with a cadence set by the state. Um, circul- circulation element had some minor tweaks, but essentially that, that 24-year-old document is the one that we turn to every day for our land use decisions, um, and our blueprint for growth, and that, as you know, is a problem. So this is a really important thing. Um, and why, why it's important is that, again, that's our blueprint for the future growth, and there's a lot of legal requirements and state laws that this document addresses. Some of it's legal, some of it's vision, and a lot of it is policy, and that's really important as we grow and change. Um, as you know, you started this effort a few years ago, um, and again, Jim and his team have been here from the beginning. So they have, you know, a great institutional memory and know a lot of the history of the visioning and community exercises that shaped this. Um, and so it's exciting, and I think, you know, this is also working in concert with the downtown El Comino Real specific plan. So tonight, we're here to talk about these two elements, and what, what I really want to emphasize is that this is, I don't want to say procedural, but, you know, we've spent a lot of time working on this. We feel like it's in a really good place, and we want to check in with you on major policy direction, really at that kind of airplane level. Um, we've had regular check-ins, right? We had a meeting in June, we had a meeting in September, we had a meeting in December. We'll be back at it in, in about a month. Um, you've seen a lot of this before. There, there are some things you haven't seen in as much detail, such as the implementation programs. So I wanted to make sure that was on your radar for tonight, discussion and comments, any further implementation programs um, that the council level you think are important. And really important to talk about economic development. I mean, now more than ever, we need to grow our tax base, we need to invest in our businesses. Um, so it's a really important one, and I wanted to present to you tonight, along with that land use and built environment element, which really is the art stone of the general plan's land use vision. So again, tonight, we're focusing on key goals and policies, higher level review, um, and implementation programs. And I'll just pause and say, you know, we're here tonight really for confirmation, see if there's any other changes needed, because after this, we launch into, um, finalizing the environmental impact report and finalizing these elements for public review. This wraps into a lot of moving parts. I feel like this slide just keeps getting bigger, more little bubbles growing. Um, but as you know, the general plan sits at the top, um, of this planning effort with the overarching policy framework that guides citywide growth over the next 20 years. And beneath that, we have our active transportation plan on the left, which is that citywide bicycle and pedestrian master plan that I'm really pleased we got through the process last year, as you requested, to get, you know, get one done. Um, that was adopted by the City Council on October 12th, and actually informs a lot of this work and informs a lot of the mobility, um, element that you'll see at our next meeting. And then on the bottom right, you know, we put, spent a lot of time last year talking about the downtown El Comino Real specific plan. That's where the major changes to land use are happening. So when you hear us talk about land use and changes, this is really the area of growth in the city, um, in our downtown district and El Comino Real Transit Corridor, along with the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan, which you, um, you already have in place, and we're not touching that as part of this comprehensive planning effort. But you'll have the downtown El Comino Real Specific Plan back before you in March. Um, some of the items we talked about tonight are interconnected with that, woven in from a policy perspective. Um, but tonight, we're really talking about the general plan update, which is a broader aspect of it. And to summarize this, I want to emphasize how much we have to do in 2022. It's a big year. Um, I'm optimistic it will, it will turn 2021 on its head, but so we re-initiated this project last spring, and we've been going full steam ahead. Again, you adopted the active transportation plan, you had a lot of very productive, um, study sessions on the major changes in, in the city around land use changes, around height changes, around density changes in the, in the specific plan area. We're not here to talk about that tonight. Um, I think we, we got enough feedback that allows us to do our job, really here to focus on finalizing the general plan update. Um, and then we'll come back with the preliminary draft specific plan in March. And why is this timeline important? Well, we've got to get out an environmental impact report. If you've ever seen those, you know, um, they're, they're really voluminous, they're several inches, and our team is busy getting that going, so we can get it out, um, early summer to, to start a public review period. And along with that, publicate the document, we'll have the public review drafts of the general plan update and the specific plan update out for the community to, um, review and give us final feedback on with the plan to have the adoption of these items, um, before you in the fall. And that's important, not only because we have a housing element that we need to complete this year, um, but I think we're all, I'd like to say, super excited to accomplish this this year. So quick overview of the general plan, again, it's, this serves as the city's long-term blue, blueprint for development. So you're seeing high-level policies, high-level goals here. Um, and it's really at that high level, and it's, but it is the policies upon which land use decisions are made, and also infrastructure decisions. So this is really important to keep it up to date, respond to, as you know, changing state and regional regulations and plans, projects, um, and circumstances, state housing legislation, as you know, you keep hearing about changes all the time. There's a lot more coming this year, as I've heard. We've had mobility changes, um, other things that come up, like high-speed rail, water supply, um, et cetera. The built environment is always changing. That's kind of the nature of it, but we've also seen changes in climate, changes in, in other exterior forces. So with that quick summary, I'll turn it over to Jim Harness, Inter-Harness, our consultant, who will just lead you through a few more slides that show you with an overview of those two draft elements.
Well, great. Thank you, Darcy. Uh, that was a great overview. It makes me tired thinking about all the work we've done and what we have left to do. This is, uh, just as a background, I've been doing this kind of work for a long time. This is a, a, a really major multifaceted effort that we've been involved with, with your staff and you, uh, for many years now. Uh, the idea of having a general plan, specific plan, street skate plan, um, the ATP, and Darcy didn't mention, but the housing element also, um, being prepared and to, and coming to completion this year is a huge effort, and we're all working really hard to make your, uh, work as, um, easy as possible. But it's a very challenging process. So, uh, I'm gonna, uh, give a quick overview of the general plan, introduce you to a couple of the elements, and then we'll, uh, talk a little bit more about those later. But, uh, you, uh, several months ago, you went through, uh, the review of the vision and the guiding principles. This is kind of the, the umbrella under which the, the general plan, uh, resides and all your other, um, documents. And, uh, we're just putting the vision up here as a reminder of kind of the big picture, what you're really looking for, uh, from all of these documents that, uh, Darcy has just mentioned. Next slide. And, uh, to, as a, a kind of further guide for, uh, the general plan, policy document, um, and the specific plan are the guiding principles that you also reviewed and blessed, and those are incorporated into the general plan and the introduction of, if you have a chance to look at that. But these touch on the key areas that the commission and council are most concerned about and really provide guideposts as we develop the goals, the policies, and the programs, uh, for the general plan and for the specific plan, uh, as well. So these have been, um, kind of checkpoints for us to look back to, to make sure that we are touching all these bases and that the goals and policies and programs really are, uh, taking into consideration your, uh, guiding principles and the vision, of course. Next slide. So as, uh, Darcy summarized, the general plan is your kind of constitution for growth. Um, the state law requires a specific, um, describes, um, eight specific elements, uh, that are required. Uh, the general plan guidelines that the Office of Planning Research publishes, provides very detailed guidelines about, uh, approaches to addressing these elements. But in the end, the law and the guidelines allow every city and county to structure their general plan in a way that fits their needs best. So if there are some issues that the state law suggests that you address that aren't relevant, um, to a community, um, uh, agricultural land use strikes me as one that might not be particularly relevant to Millbrae. You don't have to, uh, address it, but you do have the flexibility of organizing your plan, uh, the way you choose and naming the elements the way you choose. And so we've, um, structured the, this general plan based on your existing adopted general plan, um, and, uh, made some refinements based on changes in state law, uh, as well as, uh, contemporary planning principles. So the, um, the general plan elements, uh, as you see here, described, um, uh, cover not only the required provisions in general plans, but there are some optional issues that your general plan addresses, uh, economic development comes to mind. It's the, uh, a major one that, uh, is important to the city, and so we incorporate that into the, uh, the goals and policies and programs. Tonight, we're going to look at two elements, um, the land use and built environment element and the economic development element. The, uh, the, and we'll, uh, and we'll talk about this later, but we will, uh, address the other elements later on, uh, in that subsequent, uh, study sessions. So the land use element oftentimes is considered kind of the, the alpha element in the general plan, even though state law requires that, uh, all elements have, uh, equal weight in your decision-making. But, uh, the reality is that the land use element and decisions about growth and change that are centered on the land use element oftentimes become, uh, central focus of a general plan. So this is, um, typically the element that, um, most communities provide the most focus on. It's really the, kind of your guide for improving future growth and development. It includes, um, policies, actually standards and policies related to, uh, residential density and, um, land use intensity. Land use intensity really is a, um, a measure of non-residential growth, industrial, commercial growth. How dense, uh, can, and intense can the development occur on, on these properties? There is a direct, uh, relationship between the general plan and the adopted specific plans that you have. And in this case, we're, um, preparing the specific plan in parallel, the downtown and El Comino Real specific plan with, um, in parallel with the general plan. And so there's a really direct correlation between the goals and policies and programs that we'll be talking about tonight about in the land use element, uh, and the downtown and El Comino Real specific plan. The, there is also a, a major focus on, uh, ensuring that there is adequate infrastructure and facilities to support the development. And then a new, um, one of the newer state laws related to general plans relates to environmental justice, and, uh, it directs cities and counties to address land use in terms of, um, the effects of, um, uh, pollution and, uh, other elements related to, um, uh, impacted communities. Next slide. So, uh, there are a lot of policies and programs and goals in the, the land use element. Uh, we clearly have a limited amount of time tonight, so we thought we would highlight, um, and point to several policies that we thought, um, kind of rose to the, um, maybe a little bit higher level in terms of addressing the issues that we've heard, uh, from the community and from the commission and council in terms of your concerns about growth and development. And, uh, we can come back to these and talk about the, them specifically, uh, uh, in our, uh, follow-up discussion. But looking at, um, prioritizing, uh, development, uh, in the specific plan area is a key. That really is, uh, where most of the change in the community is going to occur in the, um, downtown and El Comino Real specific plan, as well as the changes already occurring in the stationary, uh, specific plan. We have, we have policies related to, uh, development standards, balanced neighborhoods, a whole range of issues that go directly to how is the city going to grow and change in the future? And how are you going to preserve what's important? Next slide. So, uh, actually, I wanted to mention something, uh, about the policies. If you, uh, when you go through, uh, the policies, you'll note, uh, at the end of each policy, there is, um, a policy source that describes where that policy came from, then, Darcy. The, um, what we, uh, when we, uh, develop a general plan, we start with your existing plan and work with staff to develop, uh, uh, and identify what policies, programs, and goals are, uh, still relevant and should remain unchanged. Um, what, uh, which of those are, uh, still good but need to be revised and refined based on changes, uh, over the years, and it's been a lot of years since, uh, your plan was adopted. And then, uh, lastly, uh, which, what content of your general plan is, um, uh, unnecessary to carry forward? Programs have already been implemented, policies that aren't relevant, and that's our starting point. And, uh, then we build, uh, on that to create, uh, new goals, policies, and programs that address either new state law or contemporary planning issues, or things that we've heard from you and the community over the course of the last several years in terms of our outreach. And so we try to track all of those, uh, the source of all of those policies. And so you'll note that, um, after each policy and after each program, it'll identify the source of, uh, that policy or program. And the, uh, source is either an existing, um, uh, policy program in your general plan. Maybe it's left the same, maybe it's modified, or a new, uh, policy program. So, uh, just to give you a reader's guide, that's, uh, an important, um, thing to note. When you're reading through this, if you wondered where some of the policies have come from, some may be carryover from your existing plan, some may be. Okay, next slide. And, uh, thank you. And then I wanted to mention, uh, before we talk about these implementation programs, that, uh, general plan can be implemented in several different ways. One are programs, that's the key implementation tool. But there are a number of other ways that the, uh, general plan is, uh, implemented. And, um, to indicate, uh, those different methods of implementation, we have little tags at the end, uh, after the, um, at the end of each policy that describes, uh, how that is being implemented. Then, uh, a number are implemented just through your review of, um, uh, development applications. So they provide guidance for how you would review and approve development. Others relate to how you, uh, budget and finance, um, the, uh, adopt budget and financing. Others are in, in a governmental coordination. So the introduction, uh, of the general plan describes and lays out the different ways a plan can be implemented. And so when we look at the, uh, uh, program section of, uh, each of the elements, this is only one of the ways that, um, uh, the general plan is implemented. And in this case, we've highlighted several in the land use and built environment element that we think are key. Of course, changes in zoning ordinance are, uh, uh, a real key to implementing, uh, land use element. But also, uh, you may be aware of objective residential design standards are a major, uh, new issue to address, um, residential development primarily and, uh, buy-right development. And then there are several other areas that we think are particularly key to implementing land use for the city facilities and tree reservation. Um, and then there are some, uh, program focused on environmental justice outreach that, uh, emphasizes, uh, outreach to disadvantaged communities that may not, uh, always participate in your decision-making process. And so these are, we've just highlighted these. Uh, I think all of the implementation programs are key. But in your review of the, uh, general plan and the, uh, the programs, um, one thing that you should keep in mind is that most of the programs require budgeting, uh, some funding from you, uh, ultimately, the city council. And so thinking about, uh, where, uh, you feel your resources are best allocated. Think, as you read through the implementation programs, um, for this and other elements, that's something to keep in mind in terms of, do these, uh, address your priorities, the, the, the council priorities? And, um, are they, um, uh, are they key to ensuring that the general plan is fully implemented? So. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the land use diagram, um, and, uh, I should note that, uh, most of the city, uh, is, uh, would be unchanged, all of the yellow areas, the low-downs, the single-family residential neighborhoods that predominate, uh, the city. The primary areas that change are the two specific plan areas, and those are the light and dark pink. And each of those specific plans, as you know, have their own set of land use categories. And so the general plan essentially refers to the land use, um, uh, provisions in each of the two specific plans. And so they're, they're read in concert, uh, and, uh, the, I should also mention that the policies are developed in concert. So there are, uh, this potential, uh, for, um, duplication or overlap between policies in the general plan, policies in each of the specific plans. And so we, uh, try to make sure that there's no duplication, that there is kind of a, a very level of, uh, policy development. And when we do talk to you about the specific plan in March, we'll kind of come back and look at the general plan and talk to you about the, the relationship between, uh, specific plan, goals, policies, and programs and the general plan. And I know it's, this is kind of getting into the planning weeds, but, um, it's an important distinction to make because we, we want to make sure that, uh, each of the specific plans in the general plan are, uh, well-crafted and are freestanding, uh, policy documents that you can rely on for your decisions. Next slide, please. So the other element that we wanted to, um, address tonight with you is the economic development element. This is an optional element. It's not required. It's part of a general plan. But it is not unusual for cities to include economic development elements because, uh, that's such, um, an important aspect, um, to, uh, and, and kind of linkage with growth uh, and change within a community is what's that growth and change look like? How does it benefit, uh, your constituents? How's it benefit the city? And so we've, uh, focused on, um, a number of, uh, key areas in the, the economic development element. And these are pretty traditional for economic development, uh, the diversity and job education, or job diversification. Um, a real important, a very important part in every community is to, uh, retain and expand existing businesses. That's where your, that's where your, kind of your core, uh, uh, base is, is your, uh, long-term existing businesses. And then, of course, a number of other, uh, areas that are important, uh, in terms of being business-friendly, to streamline, uh, to the extent reasonable development approvals and focus on, uh, community character and, um, resolve some of the sticky issues in, uh, your downtown area in terms of, uh, beautification, business mix. And so, uh, with, uh, the land use and the built environment element, as well as all your other elements, we have a series of implementation programs that are designed to, uh, achieve, um, the goals and policies that we described in the elements. So we're looking at a focus on biotechnology, life sciences, uh, maintaining a business-friendly climate, looking at some improvements in the way the city conducts business, both with, uh, digital permit processing, which is becoming a, a more. a more common tool, local governments are using, streamlining development approval, and then focused on some of the other key issues that are important to the city. So we've, where it's appropriate, we've tried to develop programs that would actively pursue the these policy topics, addressing culinary tourism, marketing branding of the city. There is a program that suggests retention of economic development coordinator and then the permanent processing software talked about with development permitting. And next slide. So that's a really quick overview and we'll come back and talk about those other policies that you're that you've flagged in your initial review of the policy document. I want to reinforce what Darcy said, that this is a preliminary public review draft. We're going through this process to make sure that as we start the environmental view process, there aren't some basic issues with the general plan that the council or commissioner are concerned about that would affect the environmental review. But this, the plan will be out for initial review now, but will be subject to public review and your review and revision over the next several months. So this is an initial discussion, but there will be several other discussions to follow before you're asked to consider adoption of the plan. Right now, we have scheduled for next month, another study session to look at four other elements. And there's also a March study session to look at the draft specific plan. So you'll see the interaction after those two study sessions between the goals, policies and programs of the general plan and the the content of the specific plan. We've also initiated preparation of the EIR in order to accomplish the council's goals of having the all of the the plans and EIR certified by, plans adopted, EIR certified by the end of this calendar year. We've started the EIR preparation. And we've had a scoping session already. So we're working with Rincon closely to conduct that environmental analysis. And we're hoping to have, as Darcy said, a draft EIR out by, I think, the end of summer. So the what we're looking for tonight, and this is an initial discussion. Obviously, we have at least one more study session on the general plan scheduled. But initial high level focus on the goals and policies that we've highlighted, as well as others in implementation programs of both the land use and built environment element and the economic development element.
Well, Jim, you and Darcy made me tired looking at all this work, to tell you the truth. This is an immense amount of thought and process that went into this, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
All right, one one last thing, I have to commend your staff. They've been awesome, they've really stepped up, really provided guidance on short term schedule. They're they're really great to work with. It's really, really nice to work with Tom and Darcy and the her staff to pull this together. So it's a huge, it is a huge effort, and my experience is very few times you have this many moving parts on the general plan update. So it's a big effort. We're, it's really a compliment to you and your staff that we're moving along as well as we are.
That's beautiful to hear, thank you. I think for the for the process of this meeting, what I'd like to do with the consensus of everybody on planning and and council is how about if we if we give everybody three or four minutes? Because we do have some public comment that we'd like to listen to as well. And and in the respective time of everybody, we'd like to get through this probably in the next hour or so. I'd like, can we can we give everybody like three minutes? And we'll start maybe with, can I start with Councilmember Holliver? Comments, questions at this high level?
Sure. Unless we want to hear a public comment first.
I think I think I'll take council and then we'll go to planning. And I just want to make sure planning gets in here this time. So I'm want to, I don't mean to cut you short, anybody on council, but I I want to be respectful as well.
Yeah, I don't have too much, just a couple of questions. The first one, first of all, thank you for all the hard work that's gone into this over a long period of time, it's very, very important for Millbury. First one is on the table LU dash one, land use designations. It's page two dash seven. I noticed that, you know, for each of the different land use designations, they all have a maximum FAR of point five. And that includes, not not that, you know, very many parts in Millbury are designated as high density or medium high density, but wouldn't, you know, high density, if there's forty three to eighty dwelling in this break, or wouldn't sort of by definition, the FAR would be more than point five? These are mid rise or high rise buildings?
Sure, well, Darcy, you want me to answer that question? Okay, so FAR refers to non residential intensity of development. So it's a tool that we use to measure the intensity of commercial industrial development. And it's a relationship between the size, how many stories in the building. So the residential intensity issue, I'm sure this is getting into the planning weeds, but residential intensity is or density is the measure we use for how many dwelling units per acre. So in the FAR doesn't relate to residential use, it relates to non residential use.
Okay.
The other thing I should point out is that the dense, both the densities and intensities of development are substantially increased in the downtown El Camino Real specific plan area. And there, they were increased in the Millbury Station area plan as well. But outside those two areas, we're not suggesting that any residential densities or building intensities increase. Because it's, you know, and the reality is, it's largely built out. The areas of change in the city are going to be in the two specific plan areas. And that's where you see all of the substantial change in intensity and density.
So basically, so to follow up on that, all of the you know, more specific land use, planning guidelines for the specific plan will be within the specific plan and not necessarily within this.
Yeah, that's exactly right. If you go back to my discussion about the, when we were on the land use diagram, I pointed out that we had the two specific plan areas that were separately designated. You have to then go to those two areas to look for these densities and intensities. So this table that we're looking at now only relates to the areas outside those two specific plan areas. When you look specific plan areas, it's a much higher FAR, substantially higher.
And then one other question on the economic development element. You know, I browsed through this, there's a lot of good policies and good you know, guidelines for the city. What what I don't see here really are sort of instructions to developers in terms of what type of development we're looking for and what types of projects would be approved, what types of projects not be approved by the city with with those. And I'm thinking, for example, of, you know, there's discussion about, you know, mixed use development. But then there's a question of what exactly does that look like? Does that mean, you know, one story of commercial and nine stories of residential? Or is it reversed? Is it flexible? And if that doesn't belong, if those type of questions don't belong in the economic development element, would that then be in the downtown specific plan? Does that make sense?
Yes, again, and Darcy, me when they add to this, but yes, again, this is that relationship between the general plan and the specific plan that we talked about. In another, other circumstances where a city is relying on the specific plans, that you just have a general plan, then you would tend to see more specificity on those kinds of topics in the general plan. But in this case, we're essentially deferring to each of the two specific plans to say, this is what we're expecting in this area of the city. And so you go to those. So there's this interplay between the broader policies in the general plan and the more specific policies, if I can say that correctly, and programs within the each of the specific plan areas. And so that's the kind of the way that these two, well, the general plan and the two specific plans kind of interplay.
Thank you, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Beautiful. Can we have Councilmember Feng?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as I was just typing up some of the talking points that I wanted to bring up. But I I'll try to be brief in the moment. The first thing is, you know, as I was reading through LU three, LU three one with regards to existing residential neighborhoods. I think one thing that is clear to us is that we need to start thinking about, you know, how to, as quickly as we can, quite frankly, is to develop a residential design guideline for specific neighborhoods. I mean, as you all well knows, Millbury has been well known for our residential neighborhoods. We have a lot of great things about, you know, how our neighborhood character has been. But as we move the city forward, as we look forward to our next generations of residents coming in, what would they like to see? What would they be proud of to call city, to call Millbury their home? So we need to incorporate all of those guidelines and those ones and needs into these neighborhood characters and as we define our neighborhood. What do you call it? The design guy, the residential design guideline moving forward. I think that's an important element for us to consider. So is that something that would be a part of the general plan? I would imagine this is something a little bit more specific as we move forward. Do we need to have a vision defined in here or no?
We are developing residential objective design standards as a part of this this update, and it does play into this neighborhood character issue. It's a, it's a challenging issue for local governments these days because the state is pushing to have standardized guidelines or or standards for residential development to encourage and streamline residential development.
You mean objective, like object design, objective design standard is what you're referring to?
Exactly right. And so this this balance between preserving neighborhood character and objective design guidelines can be a challenge, but it's for sure doable, you just have to define what that neighborhood character is and describe it within standards.
So for the sake of conversation tonight, would that be something that we could embrace at a further moment after this is adopted?
Oh, yeah, you'll you'll have objective design standards in front of you before the end of the year.
If I can just clarify, though, I think those are focused on the multi family or mixed use projects. And as a separate effort, as an implementation program, we'll take a deeper dive around single family design.
In terms of different neighborhood as well, right? Because certain neighborhoods are more single family oriented, more, some other neighborhood could be more higher density residential that might have a different flavor to it that would make sense for our city moving forward. Is that right, Darcy?
Yeah, so that this effort will include multi family, objective design standards. I think we've actually folded into the housing element as as a way to address some of the more recent state housing laws on this topic. And then as an implementation item for this general plan. So again, a little ahead of ourselves will, as as stated in policy LU three point two, the city will prepare and implement residential design standards for single family homes. And that will come in the future. That's sort of the next big advanced planning initiative that we'll undertake. But very specialized, as you saw on the land use map, there's a lot of yellow out there, right? So there and there's a lot of, so we're not ignoring the yellow. We're just saying that it will take a deeper dive to focus on the single family neighborhoods and the characters. And that's where we'll we'll have these conversations. But Minter Harnish will prepare objective design standards for multi family, which I think I think is for or more units. So the orange areas and the other multi family areas will have those design standards with the general plan.
Yes, between the yellow, the orange and the pink and the deeper sort of purple.
Yeah, we don't leave any areas unaddressed with some design standards. And then the the specific plans have actually a lot of design standards. So those are coming, just wait until March to see those design standards for all the specific plan area, which will be very detailed. We, you know, we've just learned a lot over the last few years as to what we want to see addressed through those design standards. So those are just coming soon for those areas.
Okay, thank you, Darcy.
Darcy, if I could, oh, excuse me, if I could just jump in for a second. This is Ellis Raskin from the City Attorney's Office, forgiving my camera's not working tonight. But it's worth mentioning, too, that we should keep in mind the distinction between the general plan efforts and the zoning code. The general plan is generally a broad policy based document that guides in very broad strokes, the type of development that people would like to see and that the city council ultimately choose for the future of the city. The zoning code is where specific design standards are generally implemented and where site specific and neighborhood specific height standards and other similar standards are put into place. And so after the general plan is adopted, then the city council will have an opportunity to go back to the zoning code and ensure that it is consistent with the broad policy directions that are put into place through these efforts here.
Councilmember Feng, did you have any other comments?
Yeah, just want something really brief that I wanted to just kind of bring up for sake of a discussion. Parking, especially near our downtown area. What it means, you know, for our future higher density residential development, as well as those mixed use development that we might be envisioning. You know, along El Camino Real corridor, along Broadway and this whole centralized business district, how that should look like? And what is our vision should be, right? In terms of as we reposition or or consider how we better utilize our publicly owned, you know, parking facilities and envisioning how it would aid the future growth path of our city, specifically in our downtown area, how we can accommodate all these new residential and mixed use of mixed use development. And whether or not these policies and these visions should be described in this general plan.
I'll take a stab at answering that first. So there are policies in the land use and built environment element that touch on parking. But as Mr. Raskin just pointed out, policy level up here, and then you have the specific plan and the zoning that have more detail in terms of actual requirements. But if you're flipping through it, you can bring it up, policy LU five point three for the downtown and LU six point four for El Camino Real. Those just touch on high level concepts, which again then are implemented in in these, in the zoning code of a specific plan. And what the policies just say is the city will review and update parking requirements for those properties in those areas. But we put in there some ideas that says, including provisions for parking for mixed use projects, offsite parking, payment of in loop parking fees, other shared parking options, again, to be a little innovative. But those will be policy decisions, exact granular details that will come back to you in the future. So I hate to say, they're coming back to you. But more importantly, did you hear anything sort of on the policy level that's missing? I know parking is really important, so we have policies to address that. But again, what we're looking for tonight is, you know, are any, do we miss anything that's major? I I hope we didn't, because what I'm hearing so far is like, yeah, you're we didn't, because what I'm hearing so far is like, yeah, you're, you're headed in the right direction. But I can tell you're really excited to kind of jump to the end and get the programs and the development standards adopted. So just, just hold on. They're coming. So we gotta stay at the high level here, get the details done later.
It's, it's, it's good to be excited about it though. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my confusion is possibly kind of what Councilman Holliver brought up. I liaise on two of our committees. I've asked them to be here, but really the work that they do are going to be in the February meeting. But for example, the Culture Arts Committee, which can make recommendations citywide, does that go into this part of the program in another element, or does it go into the two specific plans? And then again, to what Councilman Feng just brought up, parking. Whatever parking decisions are made in the downtown specific plan have a very big bearing on the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods on either side on that, because at least pre-COVID employees and sometimes customers of our retail or our restaurants park up into the neighborhoods. So how do we, at the upper level, how is the general plan and the two specific plans going to coordinate with each other? I am worried that we will silo ourselves and we'll have a terrific general plan. But if you live on Barkley, for example, right off of Magnolia, and it's considered only in the general plan, but it's impacted by the specific plan, we'll have problems. So how, how are we merging those two?
I'll take a stab and then maybe Jim can give a more succinct answer. They, they are all interconnected. They really are. You saw my slide, you know, the Venn diagram. And there's still, as you've heard consistently, more work to do. So parking is one that does warrant a deeper dive. We'll touch on it in the specific plan, but ultimately, I think you've heard the city manager talk in the past about needing a parking management plan for the downtown. And that's what we'll ta, touch on, not just private parking, but public parking, how we manage that important resource, whether, how we price it, how we manage residential parking permit programs, which are often used in neighboring areas to address spillover into those neighborhoods. But this is something that's coming. I know it's a, it's an implementation program in the mobility element, which you'll see next month. Wants to touch on anything. I mean, one of the real upsides of doing all this massive advanced planning work, the general plan, the downtown El Camino Real specific plan, the multi-family objective design standard, so how's the element? And, and the zoning code implementation is actually wrapped into this effort too, so that there's no lag in major implementation. That's so that there is this coordination with the same team working on it. But I think you can, you know, we're really going to work hard so that there is this, the stitching in, if you will, as Jim said. And you'll see these documents together and be able to get in and tinker with them if, you know, on these, on these items.
Okay. The, the other reason, Darcy, is all of us here are policy wonks. We know that sometimes you have to refer to multiple policy documents. But for the general member of the public, you know, if we're saying the general plan is Millbrae's overarching plan, then we're going to have to point them out to another specific plan. Just keep in mind that not all of us come with that kind of background. And if they're trying to fight for something for their neighborhood, we should make it as easy as possible. Question number two, or point number two. We're not using the term priority development area anymore. However, that is how a lot of grants get scored. And even let's say there's a residential neighborhood project that's trying to get transportation dollars. If it's leading into a PDA, it gets more points in the grant process. How will we coordinate that at the general plan level?
Well, we, we are using that term as it relates to Plan Bay Area, right? And A-BAG and MTC's grand plan. It just became kind of a wonky term that I found not that useful to everyone. So when we talk about the PDA, we have two specific plans in that area. I think that was a little confusing at first because our PDA includes both the Millbrae Stationery specific plan, which you've already adopted and isn't changing, and then this new downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. So you'll see some maps in the specific plan, I think, call out the PDA boundaries and clearly show that you have two specific plan areas nested it within that. So it still exists. We're not trying to minimize it. You know, it's a legally defined boundary that MTC and A-BAG created. We just didn't want a lot of confusion around what the specific plan is because
And then my last one on economic development, I heard Mr. Harnish say, well, maybe I won't do it. I find when I'm talking to residents, especially on economic development, that they're mad at us for adding anything, anything with height. And I don't think the concept of community benefits really translates to them. Even for years trying to say that with the TODs, we're going to get all of our infrastructure, our sewer, water, plumbing pipes upgraded. And they don't get it. So my hope is in the general plan under economic development, maybe there can be a section or an expansion of the benefits to the entire city on that. And that might help our residents better understand why we need to go taller and bigger in the economic development areas. And on top of that, I also hear, well, why isn't Millbrae going taller? And I, especially from out-of-towners, and I have to say, we are right next to the airport and we are mandated by the FAA for certain heights. If we could just make sure there's a diagram up there that talks about heights, because sometimes I have to go look for that to be able to answer someone. It's not self-explanatory. You know, that it's 105 feet at the train station, but it's 85 feet here or whatever, just anything like that that can help our public best understand the constraints we're under in Millbrae because of our geography.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. Vice Mayor Peppin, do you have some comments or questions?
I do. Thank you. And I hope to keep them big level, as you said. If you could bring up page 16 of your presentation. Now I'm trying to understand here. So as we do this general plan, the idea is to communicate to people outside our city who may want to come in and operate here. So in your land use section there where you got, oh, wait, all right, yeah, yeah. Would it not benefit us as we progress here to identify schools and parks? And I see you left the country club vacant. So my question is, does it benefit us as a general plan to be a little more specific as to parks, schools, and say the golf course?
Parks are in green, Gina.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's like, we don't own all those parks either, do we? It's like, but okay, I mean, fine with that, but our schools are
Am I reading it correctly? Sorry, Gina, but is it, am I reading it correctly? Did the country club is now being designated as very low-density residential?
Yeah, that makes it seem like it's developable right now. I mean, how, how, why is it designated like that? I, I'm just trying to be, general plan is educational for somebody looking at our city. So why is that not? You, you're leaving it as low-density residential. Is there a specific purpose for that or should we say what it is?
So I'll take a stab at, at answering that. So I, I, we can certainly add some labels. I think that's what you're referring to that would help. We can, the land use sometimes doesn't distinguish among like who owns it. So the green is parks and open space and it doesn't distinguish, is it city-owned? Is it, is it, you know, SFPUC property or, or whatever? So that is just a general broad thing, but the country club has a very low-density residential designation. And if you look at page two seven of the land use element, which describes the land use designations in more detail, it lists other uses and that does include country clubs as well as places of worship, because traditionally those, well, there are not that many country clubs, but certainly places of worship, those tend to be in neighborhoods. And so cities traditionally gave them a residential designation and treated them, as you've heard the term, like a conditional use. So that's typically how they regulate them. Again, we, we, we would need kind of a standalone country club or sort of quasi, quasi-public facility designation that would be new if you wanted to treat that a little bit different.
Well, again, Darcy, I'm just trying to be, so as I understand it, this plan is supposed to educate people who don't know the city. So should we be, is it helpful? You guys are the experts here. I'm not. I do think it's important to identify where the schools are.
Yeah, and sometimes those are, those just have like little icons on them, like a little schoolhouse. Seen those used before. For the country club, we could certainly label it. That would help.
Okay. I think, yeah, I mean, we're trying to be helpful here. So I, I mean, I don't want
Not to interrupt you, but one comment here, Vice Chair Commissioner Davis has a question on what you're asking, Gina.
This is not a question. It's just the schools are in the public lands, the light blue category, but two of our schools are missing on this map. Meadows and Green Hills are not blue on the map.
So we'll take a look at that. It might be that they weren't blue to begin with, but I, we can definitely look at changing that. Most schools are blue. So we'll take a look at standard, at standardizing that. That was a good, a good point.
Thank you. And they should have a little schoolhouse too.
Okay. And Councilmember Holliver has a comment on the map too, please.
Sorry, sorry to cut in here, but I noticed also it appears that, yes, it appears that St. Dunstan's is shown as a public facility and it's not between Magnolia and Broadway.
Okay.
How that would be
Well, sometimes they're quasi-public, again, like a private schools lumped in there with public schools, because we don't want to go too granular and have something for everything, but we'll definitely take a look at that. Maybe change the title to public-private facilities, but they're public serving in nature, generally include the schools, community centers, government offices. Okay. So for a high level, we're going to look at this map and ask if we could just refine it somewhat. Yeah, fine. It sounds like fine tuning it to match. Perfect.
Sorry, if I could just jump in one, one more time, just one, one quick clarification. The, the purpose of, of a land use map for the general plan is not to describe what uses exist now, but instead to describe the uses that the city would like to see in that space in the future. So if the land use description doesn't match what exists there now, that does mean that the existing uses can continue. But the city council does have discretion to choose what land use designations it wants for the city.
Gina, do you have any other comments, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I do. Sorry. Yeah, Mr. Raskin, why everybody took my time? Come on. Mr. Raskin, people look at these maps and they make their own determinations, like we're not doing the job we're supposed to be doing here. So I do think it's important here. There is another area here that you may want to discuss, Darcy, and your team as if we have no control over, like the SFO land, the SFPUC land, that kind of thing. I do think, I mean, because people are passing judgment here. And to tap on to what my colleagues mentioned about parking here, not, I'm not trying to get into the numbers here, but if we put mixed use and we want economic sustainability here, the legislature is saying we can do, people can do housing, they don't have to have any parking whatsoever. There, there is a conflict in mixed use. And I don't know how, I'm hoping you all can somehow maintain that, because if we're going to have economic development, if you're going to open a restaurant, somebody has to have a place to park. The BART development, there are certain issues right now with the commercial level there. People don't have a place to park. Hopefully they will work out a deal with BART for that. But that's just an example here, but I do think we need to be concerned with that moving forward here, because that leads to economic development. Also with economic development here, can you or should you put in a statement about our sustainability? Or is that not allowed? And maybe in that same area where you've listed the aspects of economic development, do you want to put in there parking or access to parking? Just a question. If it enhances your description for the general plan, please ask that. And then two, I think along the lines of what my final point here, Councilmember Schneider said here, restrictions imposed upon us by the FAA or thereafter. Because, you know, I would love to see, and maybe not a part of the general plan, but some aspect of, you know, we all will allow childcare in certain places here. As I understand it, some of the development in station area, which is not a part of this, is not allowed to have childcare. So any way we can, if that's not getting into the weeds here, make that a part of this, and we haven't addressed it as a council, but that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are very good comments, Vice Mayor. I, I want to go to planning for a second here. Before we go to planning, I'll go to our city manager. But Councilmember Feng and Councilmember Schneider, if you could just forgive me for a second, I'm going to go to planning after our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I, I just wanted, with Mr. Raskin making some comments, I just wanted to kind of go on the record here, because I think there's some confusion of the general plan relative to new state housing laws. General plans are general until the state of California adopts a law that says they're not. And we need to be very careful, because general plans are specific now, especially when it comes to design guidelines and discretionary review and, and where the city wants to go. I also want to just note that, you know, what he said about this, what, you know, land use plan is what the city desires to be. I can't speak for the council, but I don't think anybody wants Green Hill's Country Club to go away and that become residential. So I do think that we need to go to work on identifying specific land uses in our land use plan that takes those out. Every, if you bring up the land use map, everything on the top right in green is all owned by SFO. And we're calling it open space. So I do think, you know, that this feedback from the city council is, is absolutely right on. And so we're going to have to go back and, and label our land use plan and maybe come up with a institutional zone or, or something that we can decipher, because I do think you are right. There is a lot of confusion, you know, when people pick up the plan. So I just wanted to note that general plans are, are, are general until the state law changes, like they did in SB three thirty, and we're working through that. And, and then number two is, you know, this low-density residential in Green Hill's Country Club. I, I don't think the city wants to see low-density residential there. I think that the city would like to, you know, have Green Hill's Country Club remain, at least from a staff point of view. So I just wanted to clarify some of the discussion here.
I agree.
Thank you. That, that was summed up very well. Thank you very much. So can we go to Commissioner Del Negro?
All right. So I think one element that really pops up at me is do we have a need for a further safety section? You know, safety is mentioned as a specific part of general plan guidance. And we do cover flooding. Obviously, there's a section for flooding and mitigating flooding. But we don't have any section dealing with our fire risks from our open spaces, our tree lines, our spur trail property. Now, for example, what are we, what are we going to do as far as the spur trail between Lamita and Green Hill's Golf Course? There's no access points for fire safety. I, I, I think that, that part of that element design for safety is not encompassing all of our risks that we have as a community. Well, I don't think crime safety would be a typical part of it. It is something I'm always interested in. From the program, a zoning section, is there, will there be any specific mention of rules and standards surrounding potential rezoning of properties classified as public facilities zones for alternative uses, for example? School property for housing. Will that be an element within this general plan as far as limiting that or discussing the opportunities for that? And I was curious about whether LU one point five and whether it applies to citywide. This is the abandoned properties. Is that a citywide or just in the downtown and commercial region? Would this be applicable to long abandoned properties such as the gas station at the top of Millbrae Avenue? I'm kind of curious as to whether or not that, that LU one point five applies citywide. I'm actually also on existing residential standards, having been new to the planning commission and having been taught what principal rooms are. I have a hard time finding a structured document that defines how we specifically call what a principal room is. My feeling is that this belongs here, not in a specific city document. Considering that we're actually making legal decisions on it as far as what should and should not be built. Also in LU three, I guess that was in LU Um, also in LU three, I guess that was in LU, uh, three point four, LU three point seven, maintaining sidewalks. Um, I, it mentions this, I'm not sure I quite understand what the implications are. I know the community is interested in whether that also applies to city trees damaging sidewalks and who's going to pay for it? Uh, replacement of those and discouraging, my opinion is discouraging on sidewalk car parking. Um, you know, do we have rules in here for, uh, mobility, um, that we discussed covering, um, on street parking? On, sorry, on sidewalk parking. See. I did see, and to Gina and everybody else's point, um, will there be an opportunity for us to give input on that, uh, that map and corrections? I saw a couple of other ones, such as some, uh, SFPUC lands mislabeled as public facilities, um, or not public facilities. Uh, that didn't align even with our planning of the alternative uses. And, um, I'm curious whether or not trails and recreation services, uh, do our trails fall under program D or not? That's my questions right now.
Okay. Do you want me to take a stab at answering some of them? I think the basic gist is a lot of what you're looking for is not in the general plan, which again, you've heard me say this a few times, but it's a zoning item, like the definition of principal rooms or regulations for parking on streets, um, sidewalks. A lot of what you talked about really is, is in the weeds or in the zoning code or municipal code. Uh, but higher level items. You talked a lot about safety. That is coming in the safety element, which is an entire element devoted to safety around lots of different safety topics, not just tsunamis. Yes, we have those, um, fire, big one, um, but that's a whole element. So get ready to read that next month.
Yes.
Um, you talked about schools property for housing. If a rezoning you mentioned, that goes through a separate legislative process that's constant, defining state law, implement the zoning code. Again, the general plan lays out the land use map and i- if you have feedback on that, can, um, give this to us offline. If you know little things, you want to mark it up. Um, but again, we've talked a lot about that map being the vision for growth in the future and making sure that, you know, we treat each site looking towards the future. Um, but we'll take a deeper dive at that map for accuracy. And, and some of the comments you've made tonight.
I would just, I would just add to Darcy's response. If, if any of the commissioners or council members have uh, specific observations about the, the land use diagram, please let us know and we'll, uh, make those refinements. On specifically on the comment about, um, school sites considered for housing. Um, right now, um, the public school sites are owned by another agency. So it's difficult for the city to consider alternative uses for sites that are owned by another public agency. It's, um, possible to put that into, um, uh, discussion with the agency about alternative uses if the sites happen to be abandoned or closed. But, um, in, in general, a city general plan doesn't uh, really a- address the use of, of si- land owned by other public agencies uh, that they control, uh, the use and are not, um, um, affected by city policies.
And one point five, is that citywide, the OE one point five?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Chris. Stay tuned. We have next month to answer some of your, uh, questions to be addressed. Uh, Commissioner Quigg.
And just a heads up on Commissioner Quigg, she just let me know earlier, she will have to drop off because her husband has to join the Parks and Rec Commission meeting at seven. And then she'll try to rejoin. So it's good. We're getting her feedback now.
We're, we're going to be done pretty soon. So Catherine, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't realize I was muted, but anyway, thank you so very much. I have got to commend that we're finally getting this done. And it seems like the process that we're doing is fabulous. Um, I'm glad we've reconnected with twenty fifteen. Actually, I kind of remember some of this stuff from twenty fifteen. Uh, so I'm glad it's finally getting completed. I thought it was all very good. Most of my comments basically are on the next level down, which is a little bit not the big general, general plan. It's more in the specific areas and also, um, with some of the other zoning items, this is just pretty much overview of the big general plan. So I think in that respect, I think, um, they did a fabulous job. There are a few things that I was very happy about. I was very happy to see that with multifamily, we're going to have a lot of open space within the projects themselves because I'm definitely a green and open space person. So I was glad to see that. But all in all, I think they did a fabulous job and it is very general. However, that is what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be general so that leaves us leeway going forward because these general plans aren't done for one year. And this way it leaves it general enough so we can tweak some of the little things to fit into what is actually happening in our city at the time that it happens. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quigg. Uh, what about Commissioner Wong? Ellen?
Yes. Hi, everybody. Um, general comments, I'm really concerned about, um, the way our cities have been developed in relation to a lot of the other cities up and down the peninsula. You know, a lot of this, uh, land use that we have in our land use map, it identifies a lot of, uh, land along one oh one, just continuing with this conversation. Uh, that's marked as parks and open space, whereas every other city up and down the peninsula has developed this as, you know, they're commercial areas, they're industrial areas, high tech, biotech, uh, really big commercial centers. And this has become modernized. I mean, we're in twenty twenty-two now and there's high tech and there's biotech. And we don't have a lot of this because we haven't been able to utilize that land. And I know it's may not be uh, you know, a politically correct thing to say, but to develop this land, there's wetlands, there's environmentally sensitive habitat. But I think we need to throw monies to see how we can encourage development on these lands. You know, what's the airport really doing with this land? What's one oh one? What's BART doing with this land? Can we squeeze their easements down or rezone it or look at how we can encourage them to have developments there so that we can, you know, put in a frontage road along one oh one, you know, develop that area, make them develop it so that the whole area doesn't get flooded and the homes, you know, just, uh, west of one oh one don't get flooded. This area needs to be, to be developed. If it isn't developed, it's just going to be a spoils area for them. I think a lot of those, uh, you know, utilities are basically using them for utility easements. And spoils area, it's just not developed, it's not utilized. Even if, even if we zoned it for parks, that they should plant trees or, uh, plant a bicycle path. There's no bicycle path leading connecting north and south of the airport. But in any case, I think we should throw monies to see how we can encourage development there. I mean, that's, these are billion dollar properties right there. That's a lot of lands to go underutilized. Uh, second thing is, is that, uh, the area, the parking lots around the downtown, the Safeway, the, uh, around city hall. Uh, there's a lot of underutilized land there, parking lots. And I think we should really try to consider zoning that for, encourage some type of public, private partnership to have a bigger city center. Um, it wouldn't be, you know, ideally be something like The Grove in Los Angeles or the Cupertino, the Village, they're developing areas, mixed use, uh, with a lot more uh, modern walkable, uh, mixed use developments that have a lot of retail and commercial and restaurants. Somehow we should dedicate, designate these as, uh, areas that we should look more into how to develop them, how to encourage development, how to do private public partnerships, how to partner with uh, the other utilities, SFO, um, one on Caltrans so that they are willing to, you know, I think the city, all these other utilities, San Francisco, they're willing to sell these lands because they want to make money and profit off these lands. If we're able to zone it so it encourages them to release those lands and develop it, uh, we should look into that. So I'd say just hold off on the zoning and not just declare them as parks and open space, but look at them like Tom said, maybe special districts where we should look at how we can encourage development and what, what do we want to do with it? I'm, I don't think we're going to come up with a solution right now. It may not even be during this general plan, uh, if we're under tight deadlines, but uh, we should mark these as special areas and, uh, study them further.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your specifics. Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Davis.
Hi, everybody. Uh, first, one more time, thank you to the team. This is amazing. Um, you've asked for feedback primarily, um, focused on perhaps mostly they talk about those sections with a couple of other comments that, um, made me go, what? That's new. Um, and the first one of those was in, um, not an implementation section, section two point four in the mixed used districts. And it was limiting fast food restaurants. And I just said, where did that come from? And I would just like to advocate that variety is always good. So I just don't know where it came from. In, uh, two point nine implementation zone, letter C, it says, consider adopting a director's administrative decision process. Just wondering, um, for what kind of projects might that be for? Under the same section, letter L, uh, rental multifamily housing inspection program. Woo! That's a new thing. And I'm just wondering, why is that being added? Who's going to do the inspections? What kind of properties? It's multifamily. Is that all the way down to a duplex? And, uh, where's money coming for that? Because it's a, that's, it's an implementation. So I just wonder. And then skipping ahead to the business retention and expansion section, um, ED dash two point three, buy local. I just want to say, I love that. Yes, please. I love that it's there. I just hope that it won't conflict, won't, we won't be able to do it because there's other things we have to prioritize as well, such as competitive building, which matters. But I just hope we can find a way to buy local when we can. Um, in section four point seven F, um, the idea of monies are available to hire an economic development coordinator. Please, please, please find the money to have somebody dedicated, um, to finding new businesses to come here and encouraging Milbury would increase our chances of success of economic development immensely. Related to that is also letter H, um, focusing on culinary tourism. I love this idea too. Um, we also have a great resource in town at MCTV in being able to, um, get the good word out about Milbury when we focus on culinary tourism. And, um, is that it? Just checking. Oh, just one, this is an overall question. Of course, we haven't seen all the elements yet, but the, the implementation programs come with a, a sort of a general timeline of close in, a little farther out, a little farther out or ongoing. And I, I just hope that somebody's putting them all on one big chart to make sure our staff can actually work on all these new things in the area and timeframe where they're looking at it. And I guess the good news is that at some point we won't be working on the general and specific plans anymore, which will open up their time. But I just hope that we have the capacity to do all the things that we're hoping to do, especially in the closed end zones. And I think that's it.
Nice. Does any, uh, I'm sorry, Darcy, do you want to comment on some of those?
Just a few quick ones, um, because I thought it was a balance of comments and questions, but with drive-throughs that actually I just checked, that's in our current general plan. So that's a carryover.
Wait, no, I, I didn't, I would, I didn't care about the drive-through part. I just wanted to say limiting fast food restaurants.
Oh.
Think about drive-throughs. So I wasn't sure.
Yeah, okay. So limit fast food restaurants within, uh, the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan boundary. And we can look at that more in the specific plan, which also includes the zoning. Um, but fast food, you know, that's an evolving term, right? Because now they have, uh, what they, what I love is quick service food. Well, how's that really different than fast food? But, um, you know, we, we lost Burger King and now we got the Habit, um, which some might argue that's just, just as fast. Um, but it's not really fast food like Burger King is, but we, we can look at that more with the specific plan. You had a really good question about this multifamily housing inspection program. That is something that's an emerging trend, um, that, that could be charged to the proprietors. Fire does that now to some extent. The fire marshal walks through multifamily, which is generally four units or more. I think as a result of things like, um, the tragedy in seaside Florida, there's been a kind of a renewed interest, especially this actually came out of the environmental justice, justice, um, component, talking about safe and sanitary housing. Um, I think we can talk about that more. Um, but to some extent, I want to let you know, we, we sort of already do some of that from the fire side, um, but just not the building side as aggressively. Um, and then comprehensively, yes, we're, I'm tracking on all these programs already through trying to figure out the timing, um, how they feed into the budget, how they feed to, you know, department work plans, having those conversations, um, with other department heads and with the city manager. So we are tracking on that globally. I just want you to hear it. I know it's a lot of work, but you're right. More time will free up once we, we, once we get through this large effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we got through council and commissioners. Thank you guys very much. Very valuable comments. Um, I think that what I took from the, the two groups is there's lots of details to iron out, but probably not at this meeting. Um, but from this meeting, the map, if we could, uh, Darcy, if we can give some direction to, to tidy it up a little bit. Um, and bring that back to the next meeting, please.
Yes.
And we have, uh, see, there's thirty-two participants on this call. We're near, we are at seven o'clock, but I do want to see if there's any, uh, public comment.
Through the, through the councilwoman, uh, mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilmember, I want to go to, I'm going to go to public comment now. I gave everybody a chance, if you don't mind.
I'd like to comment on what Tom said about SFO, since that's the area that I work in.
Okay, just let's get through, I'm going to get through public comment.
Okay, fine.
So I'll go to Mike Dunham, please. And could we get a timer for two minutes?
Lou, uh, good evening, council commissioners, uh, staff. My name is Mike Dunham. Uh, I've commented before, a few times before this council. Um, and I want you to reiterate an issue, uh, I identified earlier with the, the discussions on the housing element, which is Milbury's obligation uh, under AB six eighty-six to affirmatively further fair housing. Um, and it's not clear to me that the land use changes you all are considering, uh, meet that the city's legal obligation under that law. Um, just a reminder, it's a affirmatively further fair housing. Uh, there's a long memo uh, from the Department of Housing Community Development on what that means. But, uh, in, in essence, it's, it's directing cities that when you consider, uh, land use, you need to work on overcoming patterns of segregation and fostering inclusive communities. And the problem is that if you look at your zoning map, the vast majority of it is that light yellow for low density, density residential. And the vast majority of, uh, homes you're allowed to build there are single family homes. Some of that's changed a little bit with SP nine. Uh, but the reality is those neighborhoods are not, uh, replacing segregated living patterns. They're not inclusive. Uh, if you are unable to afford the rent on a detached, single family home or to be able to buy a, a detached, single family home, uh, you're not going to be able to afford to live in those neighborhoods. And it's hard to imagine, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development approving a housing element where you fail to make any cha- significant changes in those neighborhoods. And just today, uh, the city of Beverly Hills had their housing element decertified as a result of failing to, um, take sufficient action to affirmatively further for housing. So I'd encourage you all to take a second look at that, figure out ways to allow more types of housing in those neighborhoods. Because what you're doing now is not sufficient for your obligations under the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Can we please hear from David Crabbe?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, yeah, I'm representing the, uh, Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee tonight. And the one thing I noticed on your city map was, um, that there seems to be a dearth of parks that are close to, uh, nearby residential areas. And we have submitted to the city a couple of times our master planning and sustainable green street network. And what we do with that is that you start with a map of the city, which you have. You want to identify your open spaces, your existing parks and your creeks, which you've done. I'm not sure if you got the creeks in there, but the rest of it in there. But the next step is to try to figure out around the parks, add a ten minute, uh, walk, uh, air. is to try to figure out around the parks, add a 10-minute walk area around the park. So, so that's people that are close to the, within a half mile of a park can walk to a local park. And in a lot of those yellow residential areas, I did not see parks located. And the concept is that to, you find out where the parks, where people are further away from the parks and an easy walking distance. And you start looking at those areas and see where you might sneak in some pocket parks or some parks that can fill in the gaps. And I don't see any of that planning in your general plan. And so then when we, once you've got your parks in there, we mentioned, talk about locating existing schools, which someone mentioned earlier. And then to take, I just go see a circulation plan, I guess, is to try to connect everything, the parks, the schools and what have you, and green streets that are slow streets, heavily planted, tree lined and so on. And I'd like to see if there's some thinking that way, especially in terms of the pocket parks and the half mile walking distance to a park. I think that's kind of the big, the big picture that I can add right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan.
Hello, Nathan Chan, Milbury resident here. I think when I looked at this general plan and looked at the time horizon under which it was supposed to be operating under until 2040, I was pretty shocked that there was no plan for climate resiliency. You know, this year, we, you know, we've been impacted by, you know, precedent-setting storms that are only going to become more frequent. And so we really need to have a plan for how to improve and robustify our neighborhoods to these climate risks. And there, this element, this is addressed in other cities' general plans, like San Rafael has mentioned this, Sausalito does as well. And we need to explore policies like climate and hazard overlay zones. We should be exploring when we might need to relocate neighborhoods that are at very, very high climate risk. And so that, the fact that this isn't in here, I think is a pretty major missing piece. The other thing too is over the, you know, the next, up until 2040, I'm kind of surprised that the city is so focused on preserving the existing residential neighborhoods. You know, in, by that time, you know, many of the current residents will be, have aged, will have aged out of single family zones because they'll be, you know, senior citizens. You know, we know that there's lots of infrastructure in these neighborhoods that need to be replaced. And so I would encourage the city to think more carefully about how to improve these residential neighborhoods and make them more accessible to people. I was just talking to a Highlands resident last week who mentioned that she might want to move into a single-story cottage one day. And will that be possible for her? Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. And we have a caller with no number. I'm hoping it's Marge Colopietro. Can you unmute?
You can unmute by pressing star six. There you go.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening. My comments are addressing issues relative to general plan specific and zoning and the EIR. Air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, population and housing, public safety, services and transportation, as noted on page two of four of the notice emailed by staff on December 3rd of 2021, as well as tonight's development element overview. Specifically, the land area from Highway 280 through Highway 82 El Camino to and including Highway 101. My concern is that several exits, Truesdale, Murchison, Milbury Avenue, Hillcrest, Larkspur are heavily used for getting from 280 to 101 and 101 west to 280. If the main arteries have streets less wide, larger walkways and large lanes, it will have some adverse traffic and safety effects on persons and property. I also want to remind council that Milbury Avenue is a fixed emergency detour from Highway 101 to El Camino Real. As our Milbury community continues to develop and grow, the issues I listed above really need to be carefully considered and protected. We're depending on our council to very carefully go above and beyond the best care of our community. Thank you.
Thank you to the public. Before we adjourn this meeting, I want to make sure that I'm on this, I'm, I'm giving the right direction here with regards to the maps. I think that was the big aha moment here at this meeting. And I think Darcy concur that she could come back with something a little more detailed for the next meeting that we meet. But I knew, I do know there is one more comment. Although, Councilmember Schneider, is it necessary tonight?
Yes.
All right. So thank you guys all for, you know, letting everybody have fair game at this. I think we accomplished a great amount. And Councilmember Schneider is going to end this with a comment. But Darcy, before she has her comment, is everything, Jim, is everything that you needed from us? Did we give good direction?
Yes. Excellent.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you. I think there's some confusion over the seasonal wetlands area from the west side of 101 to the railroad tracks. And I would like to ask that in the next rendition under this area, and Tom, city manager alluded to this, but SFO had to buy that land to mitigate their expansions. And it is my understanding that that land is forever zoned open space. But we should clarify that and we should identify the historic documents that led to that. So it was either an expansion in the 40s, 50s, 60s or 70s that designated what they could or couldn't do out there. And that also kind of answers Planning Commissioner Wong's concern about turning that into commercialization. I do not believe it can happen. That doesn't mean it won't fit in a habitat conservation plan, which is coming in February.
Thank you, Councilmember Schneider. With that being said, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Or do I need a motion to adjourn? Can I just adjourn this meeting?
Without objection, you can adjourn.
Perfect. Then we'll adjourn the meeting and we'll see you guys in a month to finish this, or not finish it up, taking this another step forward. Thank you so much. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.